Good morning. Welcome to the July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting of the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. First item of business is to review the agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
It has been moved in by Jeff, seconded by Santos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, receive comments from the public. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board on a subject that is not on our agenda?
Do you wanna do it?
Alright, okay. Please step to voting, sir.
Edward Askew, twenty-nine fifty-two hundred and fifty-fifth Street, Muscatine Island. Okay, just fill the board in. Two weeks ago, we witnessed the state DNR coming and collecting samples again on a road, two-hundred-and-thirty-first street, that was going to be their control. So the first control was Yellow Avenue. It turned out it had slag on it.
I think it was one-hundred-and-thirty-first.
One-hundred-and-thirty-first, one-hundred-and-thirty-first.
You say two-thirty-first, isn't it?
Yeah, one-hundred-and-thirty-first. It was, oh, the last gravel road going down to the Cedar River on the Moscow Road as you go north on Moscow Road. So it's, it's a dead-end road. It goes down to some properties, homes and such, on the Cedar River. So, we went out, and I contacted and talked to the field office, six DNR before I showed up. And they, the way they determined there had never been any slag on this road is they showed up, and the guy stuck a magnet out of his car and run it through some gravel, and nothing stuck to it. There was no slag on the road. Unfortunately, that's not quite right. There are small particles of slag in the road. We went out with a magnet, and actually collected some of the magnetic particles, black. Little black and gray particles. When was the slag put on this road? It's hard to say. You know, we have a history of, since two thousand fourteen, and we also had two thousand eleven and two thousand and eight. But a control should have no slag on it. Unfortunately, also, at the end of this road, on one of the private driveways, it was one-hundred percent slag, black as can be. So cross-contamination, traffic bringing that back on to this supposedly control road, again, this is not a good control. But what was worse was the state did not follow their own quality assurance project plan. Now, in the QUAP, you're supposed to, according to what the state said they would do, is they were gonna take twenty samples, ten on either side of the road for a hundred feet. So every ten feet, they take a sample on either side of the road. Hilton Jackson showed up, and he is the leader from DNR running the study, and promptly gets out and says, "Oh, we're not gonna do it this way this time. We're only gonna take it every twenty-five feet." So we're only gonna take five samples on either side of the road, and ten samples altogether. And his explanation was, "Well, it's statistically the same," which is incorrect. If you're going to take a certain sample protocol, you must do it on every site, or you change the QUAP. And you go back and re-sample the roads you did earlier with the same type of sampling protocol. Let's say you wanna do it every twenty-five feet. You would have to go back and re-sample all those other roads you sampled earlier with the same type of protocol. So here we have the second time they show up. The first time, they didn't follow their QUAP. This time, they didn't follow their QUAP, and they violated it even worse because they didn't take the same sampling matrix. So if you're gonna say, "This is a control, and this control is going to measure what is the background on a gravel road." So we can say, "Okay, slag produces this amount of metals, and what's normally in a background on a normal road is this." You have to do everything the same way. Plus, your control has to be free of slag. Now, the control our group is using is in Scott County. It's just north of Durant, two miles north of Durant. And it's on a road. We contacted the Scott County engineer. They never put slag on that road or anything. But they get the gravel from the local gravel quarries, like we do. So that's our control. That's one of our controls. As we proceed in our study, we're gonna do controls in Johnson County, Cedar County, and Loisa County. So we can see what's the background, what's the general background for metals in this material. So, just to give also the board an update, we have now finished analyzing dust from all of the sampling sites that the state has gone to, except this last one. We, we sampled the same protocol, every twenty-five feet, collected the sample, and we're just holding on to that sample because we feel that's a bogus sample. But everything else, we have already sampled. We've sieved. We've collected dust samples that are on the oral size as per the Iowa DNR and the slag association's reports. Anything basically three-hundred microns and smaller, dust that's respiratory size, everything seventy-five microns and smaller. We are also working with the Center for Health Effects of Environmental Contamination, CHEAK, out of the University of Iowa. They are working with us on the toxicological evaluation of acute, short-term, and chronic exposure of dust, the metals in the dust. And we are finding the metals that you found in the bulk samples. We are finding them in the concentrations in those dust samples. And what's even more interesting, depending on the road we have gone to, we're finding different types of metals. So let's say we take ten. Ten is toxic at certain levels. We're finding it on some roads, and other roads we're not. So that's pointing out that depending on what they were melting in the furnace at SSAB that week, when they were making slag, you're gonna find different types of metal contamination. Arsenic, we're finding arsenic on the roads. We're finding another metal, and this is even more interesting. You don't hear much about it, just like we didn't hear anything about manganese until that was brought up. Vanadium is another metal. And vanadium, we're finding in large concentrations. And the US Department of Health has a health advisory for certain levels of vanadium. So we're asking CHEAK to evaluate that. We're asking professional toxicologists at the University of Iowa and colleagues of theirs at other universities to evaluate the short-term and long-term exposure risks of the dust that's actually there now. It's not something that's gonna break down next year or the year after, but what's actually available now that's gonna leave the road and travel either into people's cars, buses, or onto other people's properties. And nobody has done, and just to let you know, looking at what the state did and what the, basically, the slag association did, nobody has done any respiratory analysis. They all assumed there was no dust. They even said there was no dust. No one's looked at the long-term health effects of inhalation of this material. And that's a whole new area that CHEAK is gonna help us with. So, just to let you know, getting back to the original thing, our witnessing of the last sampling event done by the state, they failed to follow their own QUAP, and they still picked a road that had residual slag in it. When it was there, it wasn't there recently, I can tell you that, because it had overlay. But if you took your magnet and just moved it around through the gravel and picked it up, we had little pieces of material sticking to it. So we collected those, alone, collecting a regular sample. But then, again, at the end of that road, there's this big, long, private driveway going down to a house on the Cedar River, and it's one-hundred percent slag. And the DNR was aware of it. In fact, Hilton kinda made a joke saying, "We're not gonna sample anywhere close to that driveway." So he was aware of the fact that cross-contamination can happen. So again, the study that the DNR is doing, they're not following their own rules. They're not following the quality program they said they were going to follow. So it's, their results are going to be questionable. If they're gonna say, "This is what the background is," well, wait a moment. How are you gonna compare it to that because your control sample has slag in it? So you're gonna bias your results. And having done thirty-five years' worth of environmental sampling, I can tell you, your results are only as good as your poorest sample that you collect. If you collect samples that are crappy, doesn't matter how good your instrumentation is, you're gonna get crappy results. So, and just to fill you in on what's going on.
Doctor, ask you a question.
Yes.
You mentioned you're gonna do a number of controls. Do we know, just a question, where the rock on those roads typically would come from? Because I would guess that Johnson County, Cedar County, they're probably not using the same quarries that we do.
Well, yeah, I called, I'll see, Loisa up in that area, they're using the same quarries that we use. Basically, they go to Wendling, or they may use Linwood. I mean, I asked, I asked the people at the engineer's office for Scott County. Because Durant, you know, shipping cost and things like that, transportation costs, that's, that's reasonable. Cedar County, probably the same thing. Now, you get over to Johnson County, but I've noticed there is a difference. There is some rock I'm seeing now on the roads that's being used for repairs and such. It's definitely not coming from the typical rock you find from Wendling. So I imagine it's on the cost and availability and such like that. And I don't know if, are, it's, you have the engineer here, do you, are you getting rock from, other than Wendling and Linwood, for the roads?
From two different river products quarries.
Yeah. See, so even then, we can have a variation.
I think we get some, some too, out of like Columbus City or something too.
Yeah, that's a river product.
That's a river products, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not, I mean, I would, and I just, just,
Yeah.
as I think about this, I would think that your content of the rock from each quarry could vary in many respects as well.
That's why I want all those different controls. I wanna see the range of control, so that we-
Typical of the area.
Yeah, what's typical of the area. And what's typical of that geological soil there? You know, is there something that's a little bit different? Are we getting closer to a different drift zone? Are we talking about things that are more alluvial in nature? That's the reason why we wanna do controls all around Muscatine County, because Muscatine touches all those counties.
Okay, good.
I think one thing that, that you, that one doesn't know, and that is the amount of volume of tonnage to move down any mile of county road of slag for any type of agricultural or independent usage that no one even knows about. Because exactly what you said, that this roadway runs all the way back to wherever, towards the river and so on. There's gonna be areas that that's been hauled down that you don't know, I don't know, and nobody knows.
And that's it. But when you can see that, you can say, "This road is questionable as a control." Pick yourself up.
But if you can't see it, you don't even know if it's questionable because you don't have the facts.
Right. I mean, you know, again, there's quick screen, the magnet, that's sometimes good, sometimes not. Visually, you can look at it, alright. The thing is, just don't do it there. You're right there, right up by Moscow, get in your DNR vehicle, and go four miles north up into Cedar County, and get some rock up there as your control. What you want is, you wanna see what your background is.
But you don't know what was hauled across that four miles either. That's the point.
Well, it's one of these things, you can contact the county engineer up there and say, "Have you ever had any slag up there?"
I'm not talking about with the county.
Oh, yeah, I'm talking about your private.
You don't know what the independents are hauling, okay?
Because I, you know, it's, I think that's, I think that's the issue is with yellow. I think we had no record of any slag being placed there.
Exactly, right.
And we find it, so how did it get there? It's always a question.
That is going to be the most difficult thing about the controls. So the best way to do that control then, if you're willing to say, "I'm going to accept a sample without dirt in it from the underlayment of the road." Go to the quarry and get the rock, and say, "We're just gonna take it from the quarry here, and that's gonna be our control." And we're gonna say, "What's naturally occurring in the soil underneath that gravel road? We're going to accept that bit of inaccuracy." To answer that question, do I have rock that, or a road that has never had any slag on it?
Wouldn't it make sense to test soil, say, a hundred feet off the road to get a map?
You could do that too. DNR could do that. I'm just saying is, these are all the things, but if they can't follow their own QUAP on how they collect the sample, I don't trust them to do anything else. I mean, they showed no implementation. When we're out there with a magnet, picking up things, Doug Hoyg and I are out there with the magnet, with him at the same time, picking up small pieces of material and scraping them off into a collection bag, they showed no interest at all to come over and just see what we were doing. We would've been more unhappy to share with them if they just wanted to work with us, but they at least let us know a day before they were gonna show up that they were gonna do it. So we did go out and collect samples. So they have been, you know, communicating with us that way, but collaboration is just not there.
The more you think about this, the more wide open it is in the sense of not knowing in the last decade what other product may have been hauled on any given section of road. Because as a public road, any licensed vehicle under the weight limit could travel that road, and you don't know what anyone was hauling. You have no idea.
And as we've seen frequently some over the week, weight limit.
Right, so, so, I, I mean, it's, it's something where, though, the availability, I, we'll get back to the fact is, if you were hauling rock, and it was from another quarry, and you drove by, and you said, "Oh, there's a hole there, and it's right next to my property. I'll just help the county out. I'll dump something in it," you know. That's one thing. But if you're hauling slag, and it's questionable on the safety of that material, it doesn't matter whether it was private or, or public hauling it. It's things you shouldn't have on the roads. That's what we're saying. What we're looking at, though, is, right now, is the vector. What can get off that road onto the property? And so we've set up a sieving operation where we get the material, we dry it just a little bit above room temperature, so we don't drive off mercury. Then we sieve it, I sieve it, and then I collect samples, split them, send some off to Keystone Laboratories to have it analyzed, and then I keep the rest as a backup. So we always have some of the sample left. And that's what we've been doing now. We've also, CHEAK has also done electron microscope scan of samples. And they have tried to isolate out the different particles and the metals in the different particles, all different sizes. And we're gonna be meeting today to discuss those results and what we wanna do in future analyses. So, but the key thing with them right now is we have this data for the sieve dust that we've collected for all the road sites, plus that extra one we did. And our control, we've given to CHEAK, and we're asking their toxicologist to say, "What's the long-term respiratory chronic risk?" And acute, too. So not only oral, but the respiratory one, that's the key one. And respiratory dust, the smaller the particle size, the further it travels when you stir it up. And my wife went up to visit her mother three times this week, drove two and a half miles of gravel road with, that has slag on it. And the back of her car is completely white with dust. It's getting to be the dry time of the year. So the fact that that can travel great distances, you know, onto properties and such is a key concern of ours. So anyway, so I just thought I'd give you an update. And again, we just feel that the state is not taking this seriously. If they can't follow their own written procedures. We didn't come up with a procedure. They did, and they can't follow their own rules. It was hot out that day when we went to collect those samples. Boo hoo. We were only collecting one set of samples. It wasn't like we were driving all over the county. But it just amazed me that they hit out and they're gonna change how they're gonna collect samples. And this is the most important one. This is your control. This is the one to show what is the background on the road. What would naturally be there on any of our gravel roads?
Daryl St. Watson, nineteen-twenty-four Real Avenue. I'll try me a little quicker. Scott brought up a law, one of the meanings, that you can't believe that DNR wouldn't have the expertise and the stuff to do this. And kinda struck a chord with me, and I think you're right. Unless, and I alluded to this at the Wilton meeting, they're trying to cover up what they told you people years ago about using slag, and they don't wanna come out and say, you know, can't use it, to try to figure a way around it. It would be a lot easier to look incompetent and say, "You were wrong, you're naughty," than to come out and say they were wrong. There's some jobs at stake. I think there's probably some money someplace with politicians at the state level. But, and, you know, I'm not accusing that. But I, I, I'm really concerned that they're, I just can't believe they're that incompetent unless it's a little bit intentional. Because this, Hilton Jackson wrote the test deal, and he's not even following what he wrote, his QUAP. He's not even following that. He's the gentleman at the first site that's, we told, "There's slag on the road," and just blew us off. And I just can't believe they're that incompetent. So, and I appreciate you guys keeping an arm's length away so you didn't look like you tainted it. But I'm questioning what's going on at the DNR level, and I think you need to be aware of that. Because if this goes to a suit, you're gonna be dragged into it too, because you live by their expectations or their recommendations. So I, I just think you need to be aware and question everything you're given by them a little bit. That's all I have.
Anybody else for public comment?
My name's Greg Cromer. I'm an aerial photographer. Been working on a quest to photograph every single town in Iowa, and I wanted to show off one that I took here.
Maybe like show the camera too, sir?
Absolutely.
Maybe, I don't know exactly which camera it was on, but-
Uh, there's one up there.
There's one up there, okay.
I don't know if the guy can get far.
You can probably orient yourself from the television, kinda. Maybe it's one of those back there, the doctor Askew. Yeah, I'm not sure how well people can see that, but it's a very nice photo.
Very nice.
If you go on to AmericaFromTheSky.com, you can see this picture in my entire collection. I wanted to show off this picture to you all, see if there may be any interest in a copy for the walls here.
Okay, thank you very much. What was your name again, sir?
Greg Cromer.
How do you spell your last name?
C-R-O-M-E-R.
How do we get to see that again? Did you say, "America what?"
AmericaFromTheSky.com. And I'll leave some information here. Yeah, it was brought out here five years ago by a group of nursing homes and,
Thank you.
When I took off in the fall from Cornell Airport, I just absolutely fell in love with the, the fields and the fall colors and patterns. So I kinda decided I'm gonna document Iowa, so.
Great, thank you very much.
If there's any interest, I'd be greatly, greatly appreciative.
Thank you.
Perfect drone. It's a nice picture there. Anybody else? Alright, we'll move on to item number four, discussion and possible action to approve claims dated July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of five-hundred-eighty-four thousand eight-hundred-eighty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second.
Scott has moved. Jeff has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item five, discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the July eighth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting.
So move.
Jeff has moved. Scott has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number six is correspondence. Santos?
Um, we had the We Lead grand reopening that we talked about. And then I had also the call in regards to the clock over on the courthouse. Check with the county engineer or maybe somebody else that could tell us more.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, so.
Kid probably tell you to look at your watch.
Jeff?
I just, you mentioned the We Lead grand reopening. Attended that. Looked like it was well-attended, very nice. And those that haven't seen, you know, we had, they had the problems with the building. Over there, those that haven't seen, the repairs affected. It looked like they could've always been there, and the group that did it did a nice job. Was very pleased.
I also was at the, the We Lead reopening. Took my kids. They enjoyed it. There was ice cream and cupcakes for them, and there seemed to be a pretty good crowd, so, very nice. Scott?
Um, I had no correspondence.
Nope. No correspondence.
How about committee, sir?
Committee meetings, the tenth was safety committee, and the eleventh was fair board meeting. And these guys have really worked their tails off, get heritage hall landscaped, ready for the fair, and they moved the sawmill. You got that all done. So I wanna encourage everybody to come out and go to the fair this year. You got Impact Pro Wrestling Wednesday, Thursday. They're gonna have figure eight races, which is something new up there. Friday is the tractor pull event. Saturday's Rodney Atkins concert. Sunday, it's always a big day, is the Devil Derby at eleven, and the three is trailer races. Come out if you can.
Um, committee reports, I attended the Region Nine Transportation meeting on Thursday, eleven. That's all I had.
I did not have any. Jeff?
I had, on Thursday, the eleventh, I had Region Nine Transportation. I had the EMA Board, and I had the E nine-one-one Service Board, all on the eleventh.
Santos?
I didn't have any.
Okay. Alright, my agenda here. Item number eight, receive information from county employees. Nobody.
Well, I'd like to go back to correspondence for a moment, if I could. I apologize. I knew I had something. In West Liberty, maybe Eric could just give us a brief update. In West Liberty, I don't know if you guys recall, a while back, we had a little issue with somebody living in a job trailer on a house property. I had a couple of neighbors at, while I was at the We Lead event, talk about that situation. Apparently, Apparently whoever the property ownership maybe is, they say somebody's still living there, this time in an RV, and then that they've also been renting this to someone who's keeping horses there. The fences aren't maintained, the horses are getting out, causing issues with other neighbors livestock and costing them money. And they were wondering if there's anything the county can do about it or what's being done. Eric, maybe if you'd just give us a, a brief on that situation and where it's at. I know I spoke with Eric a little bit about it this weekend.
Yeah, the address in question is 1070 Garfield Avenue, just north of the city limits. Actually, right, it adjoins some of the city limits.
Can I ask you a quick question about that? I looked at the zoning on that and it, is that carved out of the city of West Liberty or this is?
It was excluded from the last annexation. The city limits actually goes all the way around it on the west side.
And how does that happen in an annexation process? I thought they had to be, I suppose they can still meet the contiguous requirement in excluded property?
Well, the, speaking from memory, the last annexation that encompassed the area around this property in question was probably voluntary annexation.
Yes.
So there's a little bit more, I think, flexibility to move around when they annex voluntarily. So the rest of that property was annexed in.
Okay.
And the voluntary was also contiguous to existing city limits, so. The property's been deemed a nuisance for some time. Enforcement action was initiated against the property owners earlier this spring. They, we did go to court on it, they pled guilty, there was a fine levied by the judge and a judgment order to bring the entire property into compliance without counting, counting nuisance in zoning regulations by September 1st. Last week, the property actually sold a sheriff's sale. There was, there was multiple issues with this property. So it is now in the process of being, you know, entitled to go back to a mortgage company that purchased it at sheriff's sale. There was multiple issues, the property owner did not live on the property, they live here in Muscatine. They paid a small fine. I'm to report back at a September, around the 1st of September hearing as to their progress on bringing the nuisance issues into compliance. Got to meet with Allen's office on how the sheriff's sale issue affects things because the person who was ordered by the judge to clean up is no longer the owner of the property.
Could have been a proceeding in rem against the property as well.
Yeah, so we're looking into that. However, there has been some activity because, you know, throughout the whole process, the sheriff's office gives notification, the parties that have property on that real estate, you know, whether you have a vehicle, whether you have horses. So the renters will have to remove their belongings, whether it's horses or anything else they're storing there. We expect the sheriff's department will get the rip possession order here in a couple of weeks and they'll go through that process. Anything that doesn't get removed by the owners, any belongings, will be removed by the new owners and with the sheriff's department observing, you know, those proceedings. So I still think things are in motion. There's been a little bit of progress. The trailer that you're talking about with the gentleman that's lived there was not even a habitable RV-type structure. It was posted as a dangerous building, he was ordered not to stay in it anymore. I can't tell you how often he goes in and out. They have some belongings in it, not able to watch it 24/7. I think at this point, our hope is that the proceedings of someone else owning the property is going to, going to clear it up because the mortgage company is going to want to get the value out of it. There's some neighbors that are interested in purchasing it if that's... So it's still ongoing, but we have taken enforcement actions that's just kind of turned upside down a little bit by this sale in the middle of the judgment period, so.
Would you check back with us? I guess, what, six weeks on September 1st or sooner if the situation warrants?
Yes, yeah, we're going to be monitoring, do what we need to do. You know, whether that's making the mortgage company aware that you've just purchased a property with, that is, has been deemed a nuisance.
Yeah.
I've not had a lot of dealings with the nuisance livestock that doesn't really fall under zoning regulations. I've heard, you know, through the grapevine occasionally, the horses get out. But there, there is numerous issues, we just hope they're still moving towards resolution and we'll do what we have to do, I guess, as it changes hands.
Appreciate it, thanks Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Uh, item number nine is items with the administration office. A is discussion of possible action to approve a fireworks permit for Jessica Hammerlink for August 7th, 2019.
I'll move to approve it, appeared all documents were in order.
I would second that.
Jeff has moved, Scott has seconded. I would note, I think this is something we do more or less annually for this family. At least I recall seeing a few of these in the past, so I don't recall any problems with them. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
You opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Four to one? Well, that's fine, just making sure. Four to one, I believe, with Doug opposing. Any other items with the administration office? Anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Or adjourn? Thank you all.